May I raise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law.
Angry. Very angry.
Call to order the regular public meeting lower going at Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. The Board of Supervisors met in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss the matters of real estate, personnel, and litigation. Want to start off our meeting by recognizing one of our employees. We're here to recognize Mike McCarthy's 32 years of service to Lower Guaney Township. Mike started working for Lower Guaney Township's Public Works Department on February 4th, 1991. He started out as a laborer and is retiring as one of our most skilled equipment operators. When Mike started here in Public Works, it was a metal shed on Worcester Road. Mike helped relocate the department to its current location inside the Township Building. He's an expert at operating all of the equipment Public Works used throughout the years and can operate a large snowplow through some of the tightest areas. Mike has worked on many large stormwater and road projects throughout the years and most recently the Pen Ambler parking lot reconstruction. On behalf of the Lower Guaney Board of Supervisors, we would like to thank you for your 32 years of service and dedication to the township. Now I'm going to turn it over to Fred Zollers, our Public Works Director, to speak more about Mike and his time here at Lower Guaney.
Okay. Mike, uh, Mike left us, oh, look at that picture. Mike, uh, retired, I left us, sounds like a funeral. Mike retired about a little more than a month ago. And, uh, obviously we miss him, his skills of operating the equipment, his knowledge of all things Public Works. I miss being able to call him when I need somebody to come in, even on Christmas Day or the middle of the night. Even though Mike said he didn't want to be called and he didn't want to come in, he always did. He always answered the phone, answered the call and took care of whatever needed to be taken care of. But there's some other things we miss about Mike, which aren't so much in the job. You see, Mike was kind of the ringleader of the lunchroom circus down in Public Works. So we miss Mike's daily wisdom about sports. We miss his knowledge and, uh, and, um, things about family life, sports, world events, buying cars on eBay, his get rich quick schemes. So all that, that's, that's a lot of wisdom that can't be replaced or replicated. So in those kinds of ways, we've missed Mike and mostly his big heart and his good humor and his mostly positive outlook on things. Everybody has bad days, right, Mike? But, um, yeah. Uh, so Mike, from me, thank you for all the help since I've been here. Thanks for looking out for everybody in Public Works, especially the newer guys. You know, we miss you already. I might call you in the middle of the night just for old times sake. And, uh, maybe you can get that Chevelle out of the garage and drive it a little bit now. Very good. So thanks, Mike.
So on behalf of the Lower Guaney Board of Supervisors, I want to present you with this proclamation. The Board of Supervisors of Lower Guaney Township recognize and honor you with our deepest appreciation, Mike McCarthy, for your 32 years of dedication and commitment to Lower Guaney Township and the Public Works Department. Going to present to you this word in addition to your proclamation on this lovely throw. So every time you're full, you can think of us. You want to take a picture? Mike, do you want to say your words?
I want to thank guys I work with, guys that are here now, the new guys and guys that are gone. You know, that have worked here, retired or passed away. I miss all of them. And I just, you know, I liked working here. I loved it and I just want to thank everyone and that's it.
So one of your coworkers wants to say something to your former coworkers, Mike. But you have to use the microphone.
Okay. Uh, my name's Kurt Lids. I worked with Mike McCarthy for the last 17 years in different disciplines while at Lower Guaney Township. Mike has, Mike has in his tenure has seen a lot here at Lower Guaney Township. By this, I mean the township has housing, buildings, new roadways, parks, streets, and like, it's like someone just said, uh, you know, the township building or the park built, the park, the municipal park used to be, the township park had, used to be an park. Some, some people say mailmen work six days a week in rain, sleet, snow and hot summer days. Mike, along with Public Works employees have done the same. Our days are different. Our clock is seven to three, Monday through Friday. Mike, along with the Public Works employees have had their days, nights, weekends, holidays, work overtime, being on call for unpredictable and predictable incidents. Floods, snow, sleet, trees on roads, accidents, traffic lights, signs and other debris. On any given day, any time of day, he's called or we are called to take care of what's needed for that, that, to take care of something that's needed for an emergency. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. During his time, Mike has seen, um, vacant land, open space, three parks that have been built that were used for playgrounds, baseball fields and multi-use uses, soccer and lacrosse fields. With all that development within Lower Guaney, it comes with, comes more maintenance of streets, sewer, open space, infrastructure, parks and trail. Mike has been involved in so many projects here at Lower Guaney Township, big and small. I'll list a several which we had worked on together in Public Works. Stormwater replacing pipe on Wood Spring Road, inlet repairs and replacements before new blacktop was going to be applied. Over 85 inlets in one neighborhood at Trolle Island Estates within three months. A five-foot stormwater pipe on Byston, Pennale Trail. Repaired and lay PVC membrane pipe at Pen Ambler Park with like a remediation project. We blacktop trails at North Penn Oak Trail, Sumney Pike Trail and Trolle Island Estates. Stormwater project on Stonebridge. We had a huge clear, uh, clear cut and cleaned up water basement of a Peterman Road. Basin remediation project behind the barn, behind the township, behind the township building here. A stormwater replacement project in basin cleanup on Brights Road. Stormwater project down at Silver Right-A-Way down in Ambler, which is also used by Whit Payne, Lower Guaney and Ambler. It was a stormwater project. We had two areas down there to which we, which we had worked on. Of course, many roads and surfaces that were milled and repaved, cracked ceiling. We did a Norris Town Road emergency sewer pipeline break. And manhole repair and replacements. Mike has demonstrated through his tenure here, significant knowledge and was a coach and leader and mentor to those who are here now and learning to use equipment and how to do tasks in the Public Works Department. Mike, on all accounts, was a coworker who was cowed to and had thick skin to be made fun of and took the butt of all jokes. Mike made, Mike made days while working here very, very memorable. We could all have a laugh and get along together. There's too many memories. I'll just say, which I believe the Public Works Department would agree. If Mike were a GoPro camera during his time here at Lower Guaney Township and working here and working at his own business, he would put it on TikTok or YouTube. Mike would never have to work again in his life. To watch his actions or to watch his actions and reactions and working with equipment, one word comes to mind, priceless. Having to work 40 hours a week, we all, we all needed a laugh and then just take time because life is too serious. We needed just another laugh. We needed to work along with one another. On a personal note, I would like to reflect. I feel like in life, some people are brought together by the manager for an hour a day, years. At the right, you're, he's, he's, people are met at the right place at the right time. I had the pleasure to work with Mike, not only at Lower Guaney Township, but also his landscaping business for over 30 years, not personally 30 years, Mike's business for 30 years. Mike had caught money to load Lower Guaney Township's residents and even supervisors here at Lower Guaney Township. Mike and I had worked 40 hours a week at Lower Guaney Township and maybe between 20 and 25 after work and on weekends. I think we have seen one of one another and our balance. You were a first coworker, a mentor. And then I, I respect you for all the time we share together. I could say that you can have many things in life, money, real estate, travel, world and materialistic things in life. But I think what is most important are people who come into your life and become friends. Sorry, this is taking a little while, but a true friend is someone you can't be, that can't be bought or borrowed. A friend knows when to be silent at times, have a listening ear. A friend gives guidance and doesn't judge and there is a, and there's, and is there to lend a hand and a shoulder to lean on. A friend shares in your happiness and your tears, your achievements and your disappointments. A friend is competent, who has integrity and your trust. Most of all, friend is earned through all the time shared together. I'm glad to see you retire, Mike, and to go on with your life. Walking on that yellow brick road and wherever that, whatever that may take you. I wish you and Alpha and family a lifetime of good health, new adventures and most of all cherished memories shared together with family and friends. Happy trail, Mike McCaffrey.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good luck to you too.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up. If you guys want to leave, you can.
You don't want to see how government works.
Congratulations, Mike, and best wishes. And thank you for everybody for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, same to you. Next up, we have citizens comments, concerns or questions for items not on the agenda. Seeing none, no one online? Okay. Next up, we have consideration of a planning proposal for 10,000 from Kennedy and Associates. Included in the board packet was a memo outlining, um, the proposal. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make, um, a motion to approve the planning proposal for 10K for Kennedy and Associates. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion does carry. Next up is consideration of volunteer firefighters for the 2023 earned income tax credits. Included in the board packet was a memo that outlined, um, the establishment of our ordinance around volunteer service credits in the township, which provides up to a thousand dollars in credits for earned income tax paid by volunteers for two fire companies, um, that primarily serve Lower Guaney. Included was a notarized list from Wisconsin Fire Company as well as North Penn Fire Company. Those individuals would be eligible. Is there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of volunteers from the Wisconsin Fire Company, North Penn Volunteer Fire Company that are eligible for the Act 172 tax credits. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion does carry. Thank you. Next up is the approval of our 2024 final budget. Including in our board packet was a memo from our Township Manager and our Finance Director outlining the recommended motions as it relates, um, to the proposed 2024 budget. The advertised budget included one change from the budget binder that we received and it was discussed at our November 14th meeting. It is moving $20,000 originally budgeted in conservation and natural resources of the Joma Fund, um, and clarifying that to the Legislative and Administration Section. And that funding would be available to support worker events undertaken by the Township volunteers and not just one, um, subcommittee, which would be the EAC. Uh, are there any questions from the boards? In addition, we did not receive any comments from the public. Um, there's no change to our rates as proposed for any taxes in our budget. Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Seeing none, like to make a motion to adopt the 2024 budget. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion is approved. Next up is Resolution 202328, which is our property tax and mileage resolution. There is no change to that tax rate. It's included in our board packet. Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve 202328, our property tax mileage rate. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion is approved. Uh, next up is a discussion about their Ingersoll House. This is just a discussion. There is a memo that's included in our board packet. John Farrell, I don't know, John, if you want to speak to the memo?
Certainly. Thank you. Uh, so Township staff have been reaching out to a handful of realtors to ask them a somewhat non-traditional task. If we're going to potentially sell the Ingersoll House at some point, uh, that'll have to happen at an auction. The idea is to see if there are realtors out there that might be able to do some kind of marketing for the property, even though they wouldn't be the realtor of record. To hopefully make it, uh, an awareness through the community interested in restoring, preserving historic properties like that. Uh, with the interest of, you know, kind of building some, I'll call it momentum before we were to go to auction for something like that, to see if there is a, a market for that kind of thing, uh, to inform the board's decision. Uh, so we've reached out to three different firms at this point. Uh, we have information back from two of them. Um, I've talked to, uh, Mr. Stein in particular about potentially looking at some other ways of structuring the rates and the fees, so they're not necessarily flat fees. Um, so at this point, I think there's a couple more questions to answer here, uh, from the realtor side, a couple more discussions. Uh, but if there's any questions from the board, more than happy to answer them with what I've heard so far.
Yeah, I, I do have a question. Um, this is probably not appropriate, appropriately addressed to you, but rather to me. What is the, uh, if, is there a recommendation from the Historic Commission on the status of the Ingersoll House? Has, has it been evaluated by that committee?
They have put together sort of a research memo on, um, on the historical aspects of the house, much, which I think I've shared with you guys. Previously, there's, uh, someone on the committee who, um, is also an architect and she is working on creating a summary of, you know, any architectural, historical features. And then I think the, the hope is that if we did pursue, um, this route of, of a sale, that we could use those memos as sort of guidance in, in the buyers that we're looking at. But there's been no formal, nothing formal in terms of their, they've sort of, uh, had some internal struggles amongst the committee and they've had a lot on their plate. So we sort of took some of the burden off of them, um, other than, you know, the memos that they're creating.
Was it their intent to come up with a recommendation to the board as to what should be done with the property?
What should be done with the property? No, I think they were just tasked with researching, you know, whether it is, whether and how it is historical or historic property. But they weren't going to make a proposal about what we should do with it. I think that's a board, a board decision.
But, but they are aware that, um, we're looking into this option of trying to sell the house to find a buyer and they support that approach. So.
So the two, the two proposals from the realtors, you did speak with Berkshire Hathaway and Keller Williams are vastly different as it relates to cost. I'm assuming we're getting two different things and, and the third hasn't really provided. So that's the additional information I think in time you need in order to be able to flush out what they can provide to us, what we're looking for, and then for us to weigh which route we want to take as it relates to simply marketing or, or truly providing an estimation of value and kind of a full scope of work as it relates to selling.
That's exactly correct. Defining that full scope and why there is such a big gap is a big question. Uh, the third firm that we listed was, uh, seemed very interested on the phone, but then never really received anything.
Okay. Um, so I think as it relates to the, the idea of a proposal that is a contract versus one that's just like a flat amount of fee, um, you said, Miss, did you say Mr. Stein as in our solicitor, Mr. Stein? So working with him to see if it could just be on an as-needed à la carte kind of, as opposed to a long extended contract?
Uh, slightly different than that. We're looking at more of, even though they wouldn't be working on a commission basis because they wouldn't be selling the property, then maybe we could still tie the sale price to what the fee actually is. So that they would be getting some fee kind of no matter what, but then so that they have the incentive to bring a lot of people to the auction process, it would be higher if it's sold for more.
Did either or any of the firms identify a timeframe as it relates to time of year that would be beneficial, I think, as for, as far as us being prepared? I'm assuming during the holidays in January are not the ideal time with something on the market.
One realtor in particular suggested getting it on sometime in January, um, at least the advertising going sometime in January, then, you know, waiting for the actual auction timing. Um, but they said that really the spring and the real estate spring is really wild, still very cold out is when you want to have things on the market, according to them.
And we're still within that timeframe.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, we're still very much within a good timeframe and also say that all of the, the folks that we reached out to have, uh, extensive experience with historic properties as well. So these weren't just a random assortment of people we picked.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work on this, John.
Any additional questions from the board? Any questions for the public? Thank you so much, John. Appreciate it. Um, next up, we have a memo and, and that's seeking authorization contracted Co-Stars for fencing at Ingersoll Park. I believe that we got four proposals. Wait a minute.
No, that's a diff, that is a different one. Yeah.
We got, um, the, yeah, proposal for the fence from the Co-Stars vendor today.
I'm going to call on our, our engineer to actually talk about your memo.
All right, no problem. Yeah, so the, the final quote from the contractor, uh, who's a Co-Stars vendor came in, uh, Monday evening. So I, I wrote a memo to the board today. This project is a project that was contemplated in the Ingersoll Park master plans that we, we've been discussing. We've discussed them here. Um, it's essentially remove and replace of every bit of fencing that is on that park. In addition to that, it's, it's supplementing the heights of the fencing to protect foul balls from going into the parking lot, going into the spectator area, going out to, uh, Penland Pike. So what we would have is a chain link fence and integrated netting up to 25 feet as backstops for both fields and then down the first base and third baseline of both fields past first base and past third base, uh, for a distance of about 100 feet on each field. It would be an integrated, uh, chain link fence with 20 foot high netting. Additionally, some other stuff that is included in this is, uh, new foul poles. And, um, there's an existing flagpole there that would be removed and replaced. That flagpole would likely, uh, be located, relocated to the outfield of, of the majors field. The, like I said, it's EC Fence and Iron Works. They're an approved Co-Stars vendor. And, um, you know, it includes prevailing wage, includes bonding and all that. And they've indicated that, you know, after authorization, they could mobilize in like a two-week time period. And then we're looking at about eight to 10 weeks of construction. So, you know, working forward from tonight, I, I think that that kind of puts us in a beginning to middle of March finish, which would line up with the beginning of the, uh, spring baseball season.
Has this vendor done this kind of fencing at baseball fields before?
Yeah, so this graphic up here are example projects that they have, that they have done.
Yeah. Is this like Upper Dublin and our high school? It looks like it, the bottom ones.
Yeah, the bottom ones look like what they did in the preschools.
Yeah.
I don't think it's actually our school.
Oh, okay.
Like, I don't think it's the same vendor that did the high school, right? They would have told you that.
What, what is the netting made out of? The top that goes up to 20 feet? What material is that?
I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. Well, I would have to look at their direct quote for the material.
A lot of money. I was kind of surprised at how much it costs to put that fencing up. Is, is there any kind of guarantee on this, the longevity of it?
There, I mean, there would be a maintenance bond for 18 months on the workmanship and materials. And then I would have to look into it, but I believe that there would be at least manufacturer warranties on some of the other items that I was in discussion with them because we did evaluate fencing, all fencing versus the fencing and netting combination. And the useful life of the netting is estimated around 10 to 12, 12 years. And, uh, if you were to replace the, all the netting that's going in today on this project, it'd be about a $20,000 proposition. And the way I looked at it, if you had to replace that in, in 12 years, what's the future value of $20,000? And it was around $30,000. And then it to put in all fencing today is a $60,000 to $70,000 difference between this cost here and what we are, uh, looking at. So, I mean, that's kind of like what we did to evaluate the two systems.
So the, so it's also, I guess, important. I'm just making sure I understand. So the, so it's also, I guess, important, I'm just making sure I understand that we're adding new netting and new fencing where there isn't currently netting at all. And then we're adding fencing that's higher and covering much more of an area.
The backs, the backstop on both fields will be, will be taller than it is now. And there's currently no real fencing or netting down the baselines. I mean, some of it is there, but it's like waist high, whereas now it's going to be significantly higher.
Oh, great.
Are any additional questions from the board?
Just last one. So this cost is in line with what you were budgeting, right? So you expected it to be about this much?
Yeah, we, we expected it to be about this much.
Okay. It's just a.
And this is, this is also is the only entity that we got quotes for from, from Co-Stars. So there were two other quotes that we had and they were, like I said, the one proposal was only for fencing. So there's no fencing netting combination. And that was a $360,000 project before you added in the foul poles and the flag poles and a lot of stuff that we're getting in this proposal that we weren't getting in that other one.
Bonding, the reseeding of the grass and everything.
Yeah.
Just do we have any information as to where they have done work? Has it been in this area?
No, it's, it's absolutely in this area. I can get you, I can, we can get example. I mean, I asked them, for example, projects. This is what I got. This doesn't, I mean, there's no addresses on these, so.
No, no, I got you. Okay.
And the Little League has met with these guys with you as well?
Yes, on numerous occasions. The Little League actually got a quote from this entity in July for a bit of a different scope because the scope has changed a lot since then. And the scope's changed a decent amount in the last month and a half since I've been involved with them too. Right. We tried to, we started out asking for 30 foot tall. And it just like, the cost was way, way too high. So we sort of pared it down to try to have a scope that meets everyone's needs and then also meets your budget expectations.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Drew.
Thanks. Very question from public? Do we have any for us? This authorization, this contract award letter was included. It's a separate email that we received today. Recommendation from our engineer is in support of the fencing replacement enhancement project at Ingersoll Park for EC Fence and Iron Works. Submitted proposal was included as well as pictures. Total amount is $110,000. Like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Well, I have to say, so authorizing this contract through Co-Stars for fencing at Ingersoll Park. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the award bid for construction of phase two of the Bethland Pike pedestrian improvement project. That is where we received four different bids submitted for this project. The bid tabulation was included and attached in our board packet. CMR Construction, it was the lowest bidder for this project and the bid documents were complete and bond was included. In addition to the letter from our engineer as a recommendation, that tabulation included a cost in the amount of $209,364.40. Turn it over to our engineer.
Yeah, I just have one thing to add that isn't exactly clear in the memo.
Okay.
So the contract you're going to award here to CMR Construction is for the installation of the bridges and for the construction of some of the other sidewalk and ADA improvement stuff. The way that this project is, uh, you know, put together, the township will be buying the bridge and abutments off of Contech from a Co-Stars vendor. So, um, in addition to the 209,364,40, there's also $141,415 wrapped into this project that we would also ask you to authorize Mimi to enter into the contract with context so that the bridges can begin to be fabricated and then be delivered to the site so that CMR can install them.
Is that why like baseline contracting is so much more expensive? Did theirs include the cost of the bridge?
No, everyone bid the same thing. Baseline just sometimes we see bids that just come in really high.
I feel like some are double.
Oh, and Roadcon, two of them are.
Yeah, there's two.
They are, they are way.
Double.
Yeah, I mean, it's not uncommon to see a large spread of, of bids in, in projects like this. Some contractors are just not, they maybe have other things lined up during the time period when we're looking to install. And they're just like, if someone wants to pay me $493,000, we'll do it. But it's not exactly what we call them.
So the amount of, just one more time for the record, the amount that we have to purchase the, the actual bridges is?
We've already talked about the price for the pedestrian bridges on.
Yeah. And so the, yes. And so when you combine the, these two, uh, costs, and there will be some additional costs incurred for tree clearing and pruning so that, you know, the cranes can, can operate. But we had a budget estimate of 470,000 all in and we're at 350 and change here. So this one's significantly under budget.
Do we need to authorize them separately?
Yeah, context through Co-Stars.
The context is through Co-Stars. So do we need to authorize the total amount? Then we have to amend.
Make a motion to amend.
I have to make a motion to amend the agenda.
And I just have one more thing about the bid before. I'm sorry. You, do you guys have experience with CMR?
Yeah. So CMR installed the bridge, the pedestrian bridge that's on Welsh Road.
Oh, great. Love that bridge. Great bridge.
Solid sturdy bridge.
Just making sure there's.
So one other point as far as the cost too, is a reminder that we have two Monco 2040 grants for total $278,000 paying for most of the cost of this.
270?
278,000.
So the portion that the township is actually paying.
Seventy two thousand.
350. I got you.
Do we know when, um, if we authorize this, we'll be able to get going? Nice to have that bridge in.
So it, it takes a good amount of time for the bridges to, to be fabricated and.
Twelve years?
Yeah.
They're not pre-said?
So.
Just buy them on it.
We are looking, we are looking at a.
Actually, it is a good bridge.
We're looking at a spring, a spring start with a completion later towards, towards the middle of the year. I mean, I think.
But 2024, it'll be done.
Oh, yeah. 2024, 100%.
So they, they have to fabricate them, build them, bring them here and then in the spring.
Yep. Yeah. So we'll start the process now. They'll submit all of the design drawings to my office. We'll review them. And once that's good and it's, we're looking at like probably 12 weeks until they can be delivered.
So just, just for clarity again, um, I need to, we need to authorize our township manager to enter into a contract with?
Contact Engineering Solutions.
Contact Engineering Solutions. Purchase the prefab or purchase the fabricated bridges at 141,415.
Yes.
Okay. I think I still have to amend the agenda though.
That's the safe way to do it.
Yeah, because there's no.
You made the motion. I'll second.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion. Just going to just do it for clarity to amend our, our agenda. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mending the agenda to include a motion or consideration of authorizing our township manager to enter into a contract with contact engineering to fabricate our bridges for pedestrian walkway on Bethland Pike and for that improvement project in the amount of $141,400, $141,415. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? In addition to that, there's going to be consideration for the, a motion to, to award the bid for the construction of phase two of Bethland Pike pedestrian project to CMR? CSM? What is it? CMR.
CMR Construction Incorporated.
For, uh, the contract for the Bethland Pike pedestrian bridge project to award it to CMR in the amount of 209,364.40. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion has been carried. Thank you so much. Do you want to stand up here for a second so we can review your engineering report?
I'd love to.
Included in the board packet was the engineering report and it talks about the work performed in our last period, November 1st to 30th, as well as work performed in this current period, which is December 1st to December 31st. Are there any questions from the board?
There's a lot of monitoring project status.
That's what we do. We're nimble.
Are there any questions from the public?
No question.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Your time. But next up, we have the review of our traffic engineering report that was included in our board packet. It went over the projects for December of 2023. Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Thank you so much, Mr. Dixon. We appreciate your report. You have good work. Next, uh, we have a review of our financials near to date as well as our balance sheet. The finance memorandum was submitted by our finance director. Um, and it outlined items brought to our attention. Those are cash fund balance. Are there any questions? And are you to date, what's your report with actuals? Are there any question from the board? Seeing none. Thank you so much, Melinda. Next up, we have an approval of the invoices. Invoices were included in our board packet as well as the invoice history report. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none. Are there questions from the public? Like to make a motion to approve our invoices. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Accepted the approval of our minutes. From our last board meeting was included in the board packet. Did everyone have a chance to review the minutes? Any questions concerned? I can make a motion to approve the, uh, the minutes from Tuesday, November, our regular board meeting from Tuesday, November 20, 2023. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion just carried. Um, included in our board packet was, were our volunteer commission meeting minute highlights. Are there any questions? From the board? Seeing none. Are any questions from the public? Okay. Next up is staff updates. Any staff have any updates? No staff have any updates. Wow. Okay.
Besides all the ones given already.
Next up, our supervisor comments. Tessie?
Sure. I'd like to just reiterate a thank you to Mike and congratulating on his retirement and I hope that, uh, he really enjoys this, uh, next phase of his career. I'd also like to, um, thank Kathleen for her years serving on the board of supervisors. Her, uh, term is coming to an end and, um, she has, um, been steadfast for the, how many years?
14.
14. So, uh, congratulations on finishing up your term. And, uh, again, I hope you, um, enjoy the next phase of your career going forward. That's all.
Okay. Kathleen, you're going to go last. Janine?
I'll just echo, um, what Tessie said, um, thanking Mike and Kathleen for their years of service to the township. We're all grateful for that. Also just to thank staff and our consultants, um, for all the work that they've done this year, um, on the budget and just on, you know, all of the hard work throughout the township. Thanks everyone for all you do. Wish everybody happy holidays.
So I'll echo exactly what, um, Janine said. And I'll, I'll just add, um, a, a thank you to Kathy for giving me my start on the planning commission. I think I want to thank you for that. I, I've really enjoyed being part of the township organization. Thank you very much.
You were a great addition.
One could argue. I'm going to take this time, Kathy. On behalf of the board, I want to take a moment to express our gratitude for your dedication and your dedicated services, both a volunteer and a supervisor over the past 22 years. You started by volunteer and they said 22. So I mean, I'm going with that. Okay, okay. You started by volunteering on the park and rec board in 2000 and then in August of 2008, you became a township supervisor. Your commitment, passion and enthusiasm for your community have made a significant difference in our families and our communities. When working with the park and rec board, your passion to have all of the neighbors come together was the start of the Pike Fest. And this idea was an overwhelming success along with the Pike Fest. Now Fall Fest has been relocated and it continues to be a success, no matter what weather my mother nature brings to us. It's still successful. Because of you, our residents have been provided with fun and a rewarding experience through the Parks and Recs programs and activities. Your dedication and hours invested to both residents and businesses have enhanced our township's ability to serve. Kathy has left a mark on the individuals in the community we have aimed to serve and assist. And your dedication to our staff has never gone unnoticed. I was told a story about how you once dumped into a plow truck during a major blizzard with one of our public works employees to see what the, what they deal with, with a storm and to spend some time in their shoes. This is one example of your appreciation for our staff and the work that they do daily to keep our township running. You're someone that has always welcomed into the office and you're happy to share ideas with the staff. So your time over the past 14 years required personal sacrifice and every minute you have contributed has been invaluable in more ways than we can count. And you've always been appreciative for your passion and the thoughts on various topics. Even when your opinions and thoughts were not in agreement, you were someone who could always, uh, be turned to for input on any situation. Our community has become a better place because of your unselfish time, dedication and we wish, and your wish to make Lowerwind Township a place where people were proud to call their home. So we want to wish you the best and on behalf of the board, we want to offer you some items of appreciation. First is, um, a certificate of service and from PSATS in recognition of your 14 years of service to Lowerwind Township. And it commends you on your selfish dedication to your community and local government as well as leadership commitment and passion for your fellow citizens, as well as all the goodies that Michelle has. And I'm going to ask the board to come down and take a picture with you, Kathy.
I want to get a blanket. Here's another 10 years.
My comments?
Yes.
If that's required.
Keeping it short and sweet. I've been hiding around here way too long. But I will do my obligatory, but, um, necessary thank yous. To my fellow supervisors, um, got to be honest, out of the gate, I didn't know how to take that term limit thing. But we got through it and I'm leaving voluntarily. But thank you to my fellow current supervisors.
But thank you to my current supervisors and those from the past as well. I want to thank the business community. I felt like I really built a nice relationship with a lot of the members of the business community, particularly, um, relaunching the Lower Wyandotte Business Association. And I wish you guys all the success in, um, building that back up. It's very important. Um, thank you to our residents who twice voted me back in. That is a huge compliment. It's, you know, I used to say, my mom used to say, say, um, imitation is the highest form of flattery. I think getting voted in by your community is, is better than that. So thank you residents for your trust in me. Um, all of our volunteers throughout the years, this township could not operate and offer all that we do without our, our trusted volunteers. Want to thank our professionals, um, the epitome of competence and professionalism. Uh, very important to the workings of Lower Wyandotte Township. And most importantly, our in-house staff, asked and present. Let's not be fooled that you guys tired of the wait, you do the work, you know how to make us all look really, really good. So thank you, everybody here. And it's been a pleasure. It's been an honor and it's been a joy. Thank you all very much. Welcome Thursday night. Anybody else have any comments? No, like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
On behalf of the staff, thank you very much for all of your support of the staff. You have a wonderful.
Anyone else have any comments?
Oh, who wrote that?
That, that's, that's rude.
I'll find out. It was shared off the high. Thank you.
We're, we're gonna miss your, uh, quick, uh, seconds when, uh, when you're gone.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Why is it lurking around you?
Yeah. Spring park.
It's just like.